Mr. Chairman, I have seven o'clock. The floor is yours.
Okay, call to order at seven o'clock and go around the room for a call.
Kimberly Watts.
Jill Lingburn.
Martha Schrod.
Jill Planfer.
Rick Boland.
Sheldon Coe.
Mike Wright. And it looks like, uh, first, uh, item is to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, you have an agenda change in front of you. Um, the notice is falling out correctly, but you do have a change with that address. It's noted on the front there. It's for the, uh, second, second appeal, uh, the second presentation. Um, the notices went out correctly.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve as presented?
I move to approve. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Uh, it looks we have no minutes to approve Hank for last month.
Yeah, um, basically what happened was is that they gave the minutes job to the city clerk, who has an election coming up.
Okay.
So, we, uh, it's, it's really that she slammed on that. I'll have two sets of minutes for you at the next meeting, which would be the last one plus the ones for tonight.
Okay.
What we're trying now is if they're gonna do them off the recording.
Okay, great.
So that we can get a completely accurate depiction of what happens.
So we're okay to skip item four?
You're okay, but you do need a motion to defer to the next meeting.
Okay, motion to, uh, defer approval of September minutes to the November meeting?
No.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, matter of site plan approval, uh, for proposed addition at the Roche residence at 25836 Dundee.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I have closely worked with Hank on, uh, cleaning this plans up and to clarifying all of the details. So, I'd like Hank to present this if he could.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me start out by just saying that, um...
Excuse me, could you tell us who you are?
Uh, my name is Sevad Salamagic. I'm the contractor on this job.
Thank you.
And I have the homeowners with me are here tonight as well, Mr. Damian and Jennifer Rokey.
Okay.
So, um, basically what happened was, we got to the last meeting, the plans were very difficult to follow, very difficult to read, had double references to things that weren't there. So what happened was, is that Mr. Salamagic has taken the plans back. We've talked about them and we've shown them, and what I explained to him was, is that I wanna see what, what you had versus what was there, but I'm more concerned with what you are doing now, because that's what the people are gonna be looking at. So basically, what he did was, is that he took the plans, and where he had the notes and everything, they were on the bricks and you could hardly read them. He's extrapolated those and put them out. He's also provided with a letter, uh, about the EPDM that was a concern of the planning commission at some time, and he can address that again if you would like. Uh, he's called out the materials a little bit better, and if you take a look at the elevations all the way around, uh, what he's looking for is the brick and also the stone's been cleared up, and we have it labeled by the elevations now, as opposed to, so, you know, you have an idea of what elevation actually goes where. So if you have any questions, you certainly feel free to ask Mr. Salamagic or myself. Why don't you go ahead and make any presentation that you would like, or why don't you go over them and we'll go from there?
Well, I'd like to start, uh, over with the, uh, leather on the roofing. Uh, this is definitely, uh, the best roofing for this particular location of the roof. Due to the, uh, ridge lines and the roof lines that they meet, if he would use any other type of material, we, uh, roof, we would have a lot of ice collection and ice dams. So, I met with the roofer with actually two companies on the site, explained this in details to the homeowners, and we have decided that this is the better, the best product for us to use on this roof. So I hope that, that clarifies the, uh, concern with the EPDM roof. There were also concerns with the, uh, big portions of the walls that are either a brick material or, uh, uh, stucco material. So we expanded the windows, we added a window in the mudroom area, uh, to break that up. So if you look at the north elevation, page A10, uh, there's a proposed windows... So there is three new proposed windows on the first floor, and then one new window proposed on the second floor, so that we break that brick pattern or, or a wall pattern, whatever you would, you'll call it.
And what's the material that's not brick? Is that, uh...
It's stucco.
Stucco?
Yes.
Oh, I see it.
Is it, is it actual stucco, or there was some...
No, it's an actual stucco.
About a, um...
Ephes. No, it's, there is no Ephes. It's all actual stucco and a brick.
Okay, so with actual lap with stucco?
Exactly, exactly. With the concrete, uh, stucco over it. Okay? All of the windows are matching the existing windows. They're wood windows on the interior with aluminum cladding on the exterior, with one by six trim that's all cladded with aluminum over. So, uh, like I said, all of the new windows are, are matching the existing windows, which were replaced about four to five years ago on the rest of the house. Okay? So we'll also, if you look at the elevation, um, east elevation, uh, we are adding one double window on the second floor, and then on the first floor, where we had existing garage, we're adding a big sliding door, and then a single door, which was, uh, existing door going into the, uh, existing house, uh, that's going in with that window in the mudroom. That kinda breaks, breaks up that brick as well, again. So, after, uh, all of the comments on the last meeting, I tried to address all of the, uh, concerns, and I think we did. I, Hank was of great help. Uh, we met, I don't even know, three, four times, I think.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think we accomplished...
I would like to point out that some of the things that were not on the last plan that are here now is if you take a look at the south elevation, which is the backside, and there was concern from the city commission that there was no windows on the backside. What they've done is they've introduced two windows that mirror the windows on the front part of the house.
Correct.
To that, they've taken those same sized windows and put them in the back. Balances it more, and there's not that long of a brick wall with whole windows in the back for the first floor. Other than that, most of everything else is already existing. Again, it's not a renovation, but what they are doing is, is that they're taking that and they're blocking in the garage and using that for living space. Um, they fall within their, uh, their square footage of allowable space, and they're creating a space first and second floor addition in that little gap that was there previously. So the main thing that they're doing is to the garage area and that little build-out part. So on the other section up top, they have a main bath, and the main bath is that they're using, they're adding additional wood windows. They're showing what you have as far as that goes. They're showing the proposed downspouts, and they're also showing, uh, as much fenestration as possible, and we did add fenestration to the project, um, as though it's a concern of the planning commission. So, uh, other than that, the regular statistics and everything that we went over at the last meeting pretty well stand the same. They're under the maximum house size. The lot coverage is at twenty-six point nine percent, which is less than what they need. The rear yard proposed meets the requirements, or side yard meets the requirements because it is existing, no change. Uh, the front yard meets the requirements, and the height is twenty-four feet to the roof of the addition portion of it. The other part is a little bit higher, but that's not where they're building it, so there's, there shouldn't be an issue with that. I've also included the character bonus chart for you to look at if you decide you wanted to. So, other than that, if you have any questions, uh, we're certainly happy to answer them, and looking for your comments and feedback.
Thanks, Hank.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will open up for public participation. Bearing none, opposed public participation. Go around the room. Sheldon?
No particular comments. I await the comments of the other members. It looks fine to me. I think he's made substantial efforts toward addressing the concerns that we, that we had before. I can't confirm that.
Thank you.
I don't have any additional concerns at the last meeting.
Much clearer. Thank you for doing that. Um, there'll be no garage?
Uh, no. Be a lot of the space?
Do later, or...
Possibly.
And there's enough space?
There's enough space for...
And they have, um, uh, yeah, okay. Yeah, they've got enough lot coverage for that?
They do.
That's all?
Thank you.
Um, so I just, I just wanted to be clear on this, because I have the old plans in front of me for what I believe is the south elevation. So, at that point, you were maintaining the existing windows that you decided to change from up and south side to...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so now it's matched?
Exactly, to balance it out and to make it look better.
All right, and you're not gonna miss the extra light coming in from the smaller windows?
Uh, to, to help with the interior design as well, to give them any usable kitchen, uh, space and, uh, kitchen cabinets, we literally had to go with the awning windows. Okay? And also keeps it a little more private from looking at, into the neighbor's house. Okay?
Yeah, that's the only thing that I noticed that I was wondering about.
Okay.
Everything else looks fine to me.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra work on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No comments?
Thank you.
I think it looks great. Thank you for working with Hank to get it right. I have no other comments.
Thank you.
I'll just reiterate what everybody else said. I, I think the plans are great and really appreciate you taking our feedback back to the homeowners and working with Hank to present with plans
Thank you.
That are legible and, uh, within the guidelines.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I agree. Uh, much better, looks great. Thanks for taking the time with Hank.
Thank you, guys.
All right, looking for any motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that... I, I, I hope, I hope it doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have matter of site plan review as opposed to new house at 13124 Vernon by Laura Hershorn. Hershorn?
Good evening. My name is Richard Ziski. I'm the architect for Laura Hershorn and Ron Yoles, her husband. Unfortunately, Laura can't make it tonight. She's out of town on business, uh, but I'm here to answer any questions and to present the house as we have designed it. Um, the house is a thirty-two hundred square feet, two-story. We've minimized the second floor and held the height of this house down to keep it in context with the rest of the suburbs, the house, I mean, the rest of the city. Um, the second floor contains only two bedrooms. Both are en suite. The first floor contains, uh, the master bedroom, and a fifth, a fourth bedroom, excuse me, is in the basement, and that is also en suite. Uh, we have a side entrance garage so that we don't, do not have any garage doors facing the street. Uh, the lot was wide enough so that we could do that. Uh, we've pulled that garage to the front of the house to make it a little easier, uh, for the owners to get in and out of the garage, uh, but that it does, also allowed us to expand the width of the house at the rear, and, uh, that way we were able to put the master bedroom in the rear of the house. Uh, where the exterior is designed in the Prairie School. Uh, obviously Frank Lloyd Wright's School of Design, so we've kept the lines very long, very low and horizontal. Uh, the roof is a very low pitched roof at four and twelve. Uh, the second floor is a stucco. Now, I will talk about that, uh, in a minute, uh, in terms of the type of the stucco, uh, or I should just get into that now. As I understand, talking with Mr. Barry, uh, it is preferred that we use cement stucco in Huntington Woods, so the owners have agreed to, uh, go from what I had originally called out as synthetic, uh, to make sure that it is a cement stucco. Um, with that, I would like to, uh, just excuse me a minute. Uh, this is the brick and the color samples that we would like to use. It's a darker brown with an off-white for all the stucco and all of the trim. Uh, the shingle, unfortunately, we do not have a very large board of shingles, but it is this little color right here, which blends very nicely. So, it's a multi-dimensional shape. Uh, and with that, that's the basic presentation. Uh, I will, uh, take any questions.
Thank you. Hank, anything to add?
Yes, please. Uh, basically, when we go through the house, uh, we go through the, um, the proposed house. Uh, the height of it is under the twenty-six foot. The front yard is way further forward, or is way further back than it needs to be, but it's consistent with the houses on the street. Side yards, which are supposed to be minimum five, total fourteen, are, uh, six foot one side, and then I have to check this because I came up with a different number here. Six foot thirteen point four total, so it's nineteen plus, which is actually very good. There's more space than what's required. And the house is under the maximum house size, and it's under the lot coverage because it's an exceptionally large lot. Um, they did receive a lot bonus for that. They did receive a house, uh, maximum house size bonus for that. The lot dimensions are seventy-five by two hundred and fifteen and in irregular configuration, giving the lot sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-six total square feet, which is substantial. All the lots on that side of the street and that are all fourteen thousand, twelve thousand plus are the neighboring houses to this. So the lot sizes are compatible. The houses that are already built there, the west neighbors twenty-one fifty-six, the east neighbors twenty-two fifty, and this comes in at thirty-two oh two. So, having said that, basically, when you take a look at the configurations and you go to the architectural bonuses, and you see what they have here for the new house, what you're looking at is, is that they received a fenestration bonus, they received a stepped-in second floor bonus, and they received architectural detail bonuses for this. Um, even though the plan that originally was presented to us did not have the, um, uh, second, the other last two elevations, which are now presented before you this evening, um, nothing has changed with respect to that. The house is still a brick structure. It has now true stucco, and it has mutton bars, but the mutton bars are a different pattern than what you would normally see. It's not like a six over and eight over or anything like that. Um, it's a different type of pattern that reflects a more modernistic style of architecture for the house. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back to the commission.
Thanks, Hank. Okay, we will, uh, thank you. We'll open up for public participation? If you just come up and, uh, let us know your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jackie Victor, and my address is 13116 Vernon, so I am just east of the house. Um, hi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you? Um, so I, um, am new to Huntington, relatively new to Huntington Woods, so I have not been through this process before. So, my questions, maybe it's not appropriate for today, so my questions are less about the plan. It sounds okay, sounds fine. I mean, it sounds like it's all within the rules of the, of the road, and more about, since I'm, the house is literally maybe twenty feet from my bedroom, um, 'cause it's just right on the easement, and my bedroom's right on, you know, on the other side of the driveway. I'm just curious about when houses are demolished, when they're built, what are the, what accommodations are made in terms of the hours of construction and things like that.
Hank, what, can you speak to code times?
Absolutely. Um, the way that it works is that, uh, construction hours are eight AM until nine PM. They're not any, the, the Sunday, there's no construction allowed because of the noise factor. Typically, what happens is, is that in the winter hours, and I'm not sure exactly when they're planning on breaking ground for this, it doesn't go as late into the evening because, uh, you can't see. So rather than have lights go there. So those are the hours. The reason for the hours are, is that it's kind of like a flip-flop. On the one hand, the longer you let them go, the faster the project gets done. On the other hand, that's a little bit later that you have to listen to it. Um, the other part of the good news is, is that like, if you're, uh, if it is running late and it is winter, people are more typically inside their houses in winter, so the noise or the commotion would affect you a little bit less, 'cause most people are in their houses in the winter months. Having said that, they would be allowed to build that, and depending on what that adds to the construction costs of bringing lighting and crews that are in, like that. The first thing that they're gonna do is they're gonna add bigger basement. The basement is, uh, there's an excavator on site, and there will be trucks and trains, which are the, the bigger trucks that come. They're gonna load out whatever's gonna be next, is necessary to build the basement. The same holds true for the demolition. The demolition will have, like, water applied so that there's no friable materials or anything that would be detrimental to health or hazards like that. They'll be responsible for doing that. Before the house comes down, the city also requires a rodent certificate to make sure that there's no rodents on the property, so that if they tear it down, they don't all just take off for your yard or anything like that. So that's part of the demolition process, and that has to be handled before building permits. Also, we would need clearance letters from DTE, Consumers Power, and, uh, any of the utilities that would be there for that. Our city inspectors will be there for the demolition portion that affects the sewer and the water, so that nothing gets into the sewers. We don't silt the sewer or you get debris into the sewer, and it affects the residents by backing up. So that all happens as part of the demolition process. Then, as far as the scheduling goes, they'll obtain their building permit, and they can obtain their building permit with the demolition permit, or they can obtain their building permit separate from the demolition permit, depending on how they do. They may wanna take the house down ASAP for tax purposes and start this in the spring. I have no idea what their, what their time schedule is. Um, I'm not privy to that at this point. But having said that, whatever it is, it's expected that every night that the streets are clean, the sidewalks are passable, and that the, uh, that everything is kept in neat, clean order. They also will have to fence the property, so there will be a six-foot chain link fence or better around the property, not a little snow fence or anything like that. And then they'll have gates that they can open and close in order to access their property. That keeps young kids and it keeps people out of the property, and it also protects the neighborhood as well as it protects them. So, uh, having said that, that's typically how those go. But I'm happy to answer any other questions.
That's very thorough. Thanks. Um, I'm just curious, do you guys have like an anticip... Do you have any idea how long it's gonna...
Shockingly, Hank was right. Uh, we do a plan on, with approval, fir- first demolishing, but then starting work right away.
Demolishing in the spring or in the...
Well, we'd like to get it demolished before December.
And then do you have any sense of how long of a period it would be?
Our builder has guaranteed us that from the day he starts, it won't take more than a year. I hope.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll, Jackie, I'll reach out and...
Any other public participation? Okay, public participation is closed. Kim?
Could you show me the materials again?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, since they've decided to, uh, use true stucco, and that's not what's on the proposed plans, any molding should reflect the true stucco.
Okay.
Okay, the stucco. Okay, okay, and no stucco beams at all, just like stucco.
Is it full brick or is it...
Oops, I'm sorry.
So, are these full bricks?
Yes, it'll be full brick. Yeah, this is just a sample. We're using full brick, and there are limestone bands. Uh, it was on the first floor, you see these, all of those bands. That will be here.
I, I don't have any concerns, um, with the design. Again, just wanna make sure that we're using real stucco on that and not the, the synthetic, but otherwise. Is this, is the builder Tim and Fred Capaldi?
Fred Capaldi, yes.
And Tim.
Yeah, he built my house, so...
Oh, he built it?
Yeah. Um, I, this is not, I, I just had a question, maybe a suggestion. Um, on the first floor, I just noticed that the kitchen, in terms of natural light, is really, and, and I see why. I mean, you don't really have, and the only exterior wall here, it looks like you have with like the, the ovens and... I just think, um, it may tend to get dark in that kitchen without the natural light. Is there any consideration? I see you have like a full walk-in pantry. I'm just wondering on the side where you have like the double ovens and the fridge, maybe we put a window somewhere. I, I don't know if you need that extra pantry cabinet. I...
It would be possible where that pantry cabinet is in the middle to put in an additional window in there.
Yeah, I just think otherwise you're gonna really be missing light there. I mean, you'll be getting it off, I guess, the back of the house, but, um, not a whole lot. Um...
No, we've, we've got a ton of windows in the back.
Yeah.
In fact, I even raised the roof there, so it is a cathedral ceiling, and we have pitched, you know, glass all the way up in the peak.
Right, right.
And then a tremendous amount of windows along that other side there.
No, but I recognize that. It's a beautiful plan. I just, I'm concerned a little bit about the kitchen not having light there. I just think maybe something you ought to consider. Otherwise, I think, I mean, I'm very impressed with the height of the ceilings, even in the basement.
Yeah, we have a ten-foot first floor.
Yeah.
And ten-foot basement, uh, but we were still able to bring it down and keep it within the height limitations.
Yeah, no, it looks beautiful.
Thank, thank you.
I had a thought on the east elevation with the windows they're missing, but I see where you were looking for the kitchen, and it looks like you overcompensated with windows in the rest of that room. Normally, we have no concern with big spaces without windows, but I guess here it works as long as you're comfortable with the light in the kitchen.
Most people who know my designs, one of my things is that I love windows and light, and I generally over-window them. But, no, but, uh, Jill is, uh, absolutely correct in terms, we are a little light there, and, uh, that would be something that we could do is be adding another window there in the kitchen where that pantry is.
I leave it up to you guys.
Okay.
Otherwise, it looks nice.
And Jill, we're hoping with that breakfast nook near the kitchen, that will get a, a little extra light coming in from...
Yeah.
From the east. It's, Mr. Chairman, it, it's kinda unique in that is that the kitchen is actually flipped the other way, so you don't have a large expansive kitchen on the exterior wall where that can do something. So, basically, what they've done is they've used the pantry in place of cabinet space, so they have a whole separate room for that there. So it's a little bit unique in design, but the contemporary design of the property with the elongated, you know, with it with the limestone and the brick and that, um, they've valued their space in the great room and dining area more so than they valued the actual square footage in the kitchen. So, that's, that's just kind of a little bit of thought process that I could see that went into this.
I don't have any, anything to say. It's a nice design. I appreciate it. Um, I just, I, I appreciate your comment about the kitchen. Um, I will say that, uh, there's a house, uh, on the corner of Lincoln and Henley. It's a big long ranch. They have a kitchen designed basically just like that, and because they, they have windows all across the back, the kitchen isn't dark. So, I, but, you know, they wanna throw another window in there. I see they have one in the pantry. But like I said, it's, it's almost the exact same kitchen design, and there's plenty of light flooding in from the back, so it's actually never really dark. So, I think it's a great design. Um, I like very much that you turn to the garage such that the doors, you're coming in from the side. I, I, it, it drives me absolutely crazy when I see a house and I go, "Oh, look, there's a garage with a house behind it." Uh, and, and all you see is this giant garage door, and everything is hidden. So I like, I love that you've turned it on its side and you have windows across the front of that, so it's kind of disguising the garage, which is a lovely thing.
Well, we tried to keep the front of the house very asymmetrical in terms of what was going on.
Yep, very, very nice. Um, I appreciate the fact that you did not over-expand the second floor on that, so that it's not overwhelming. Kinda keeps the massing down. Kind of keeps the massing down a bit. I think it's a very nice design. Perfectly, perfectly fine. Yep.
My first question is about the two optional parking spaces in the front that's shown on the site plan.
Yes.
What's the intent there?
Well, I always find that it's interesting when people drive up and there's a side entrance garage, you've got such a long walk to the front door. And keeping this a drive as a single car drive, if you've got more than one person in there, you play the jockey cars. So what I was proposing here as an option is a pull-off space so that guests, when they come, can pull into that. Or the ubiquitous UPS truck, when he pulls on the property, has a place to turn around without backing out.
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, that's not allowed per city code.
Oh, okay, inside.
Good luck, Amazon guy.
Yeah. Stay in the street, Mr. Chairman.
No Amazon orders coming.
My second question are, with the trees in the front, are you saving any of those trees?
Yes, I believe we're saving. There's a couple of spruce come down, but there's a large hunting locust that is being saved in the front.
Number three?
Number three, yes.
Okay, that's it. Hank, what would have to happen with this proposed parking spots?
Well, it wouldn't be allowed per code. Like, we would have, we would have deep sexed it at the building permit stage. But the two optional parking spaces would just revert to green space unless they wanted to put in some kind of plantings or stuff like that, which would not be out of character with this type of architecture. So if it would make, if it pleased the commission, they could also just make the note, like, as part of the, part of the motion that the, that there was true stucco going to be used and that the optional parking spaces were deleted.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
I think it's a nice plan. Just a caution, I call Hank on a regular basis to yell about somebody who's got these two optional parking spaces. That's what the parking spaces, when he's put payers down, so he parks there anyway. Every time I see it, I call Hank and say, do that. So I'll be happy to police your parking spaces. You know, or I'll move across the street like, you know, some old lady in P. through the curtains to see, make sure that you're not making.
It won't be necessary, Jill.
Other than that, I think it's a terrific design. Very pleased that it's here.
I mean, we're trying to be a good neighbor. So there's, I mean, the neighbor to our west, their driveway encroaches over a foot onto our property. And we're just, we're working with that. We're not going to require that that be removed. So just, you know, being a good neighbor, I think.
Yeah, I think it looks great. We don't have enough Prairie style in Huntington Woods, so thank you. Any motion?
I move to approve the plans as proposed with the exception that it be, what is it, real stucco, not synthetic, and that we delete the two optional parking spaces from the site plan.
A second.
Sorry? On paper?
Aye.
Posed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, for the last order of business for the evening, it's simply a matter of setting a public hearing for a stormwater management ordinance. The ordinance is not up for discussion tonight. I did furnish you with our copies of what it's going to be. You'll get the same copies next month. But because this is a stormwater ordinance and it affects everybody, they want to set it for a public hearing. So the city commission has asked that you do that and hold the public, the public hearing at the next November, at the November meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any public participation on that? Closed? Do we have motion?
Move to set the public hearing on the proposed stormwater management ordinance amendment for our next meeting.
Second? Al there?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. Public participation closed, raise fleeing.
Question, Mr. Chairman? I would like the, because I think that's the end of our formal agenda. I would like it, the planning commission, to consider what modifications may be made to our standards or ordinances relating to age in place, aging in place. We've had that issue come before us. And I think it's come before the zoning board as well on occasion that might allow some modification. The one I remember was a plan which the guy never came back and pinned down for us. He was looking to put in an elevator and he was exceeding by a few square feet, the, either the allowed square footage or the, or the lot coverage or something like that. I have no particular proposal to make. I'm just suggesting that we do some looking into the advisability of such a proposal and tweaking some things that we have just so we can make additional considerations. I hit 70 years old, so all of a sudden, this is important. Before, I didn't give a crap, but I do now. Anyway, that we might make some modifications along the lines of allowing people some sympathy about strict adherence to standards. And I recognize that any plan that we approve and anything that we might allow would run with, run with the land even after the particular person moves out. I don't know how that might be addressed. And you don't want anybody having to tear apart their place just to reconform.
So I can tell you that was a pretty hot topic of discussion on the senior housing advisory committee, which I was sort of voluntold to join. That has since ceased because it got turfed back to the city commission. But exactly what you're talking about, almost like we do character bonuses, there was talk of potentially like integrating some kind of aging in place, accessibility, universal design, potential bonuses, kind of like we do character bonuses.
So where, or Hank, if you know, where's the city commission on this?
The city commission right now hasn't really weighed in on it. But we do now because I'm familiar with the house I believe you are talking about. And they've since come back with another plan. Which meets the requirements and won't even have to come to the planning commission because it meets all the requirements, including not coming back. Yes, significantly smaller. And they've taken out the elevator. Now, what we have done in the past, because of the elevator, for, houses do not have to be ADA compliant. However, there are certain features that they do need. Bathroom access, wider doorways, things of that nature, more grab bars and stuff like that. So typically, what we do is we count the stairwell once. So like when you count square footage, we take out the stairwell. So we take it out on one floor so that they don't get charged for that square footage. Same way that we do that with an elevator. If there's an elevator, we take the elevator out as well because that allows somebody like myself, who has a two-story house with the laundry in the basement, there's going to become a time where that's going to become very difficult for me. And if I wanted to put an elevator in there, not that I could work it out architecturally, but that the, that the opportunity would be there for that. And it wouldn't impact the square footage of whatever other additions I may have to make in order to accommodate aging in place. Having said that, we're probably not exactly where we should be on aging in place. But we do try to make accommodations as far as handicap ramps. We do allow that they could be in the front yard. And that doesn't require, it doesn't, you know, impact lot coverage.
Is that on an administrative level or is it permitted by code?
That's on an administrative level. And actually, the ramps are part of the code. So that would be it. Now, anything else they want to do, they could take to the zoning board of appeals for that. Again, it would run, you know, anything that you approve through the zoning board of appeals runs with the land. And it has to be a practical difficulty or hardship related to the, related to the structure or the lot and/or some compilation.
As opposed to the occupant.
As opposed to the occupant. And the occupant, if the occupant can't get into the house, well, you know, there may be some room for, on the zoning board of appeals for some wiggle room for that. But I don't mean to suggest that's a given. But it certainly wouldn't hurt to perhaps take a look into that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the parameters would be for that. We can't be the first ones who might have thought about that.
Well, no, and, but I think when we redid the zoning ordinance, we probably could, we probably didn't look into that as far as we could have only because the senior advisory committee wasn't looking into it at the time. So we had no input. The thing about the senior advisory committee really is, is that we don't get a report from them on a regular basis. So I really don't necessarily know what they talk about. It's not one of my boards or commissions. So what I will do is I will ask, I will discuss it with the city manager and see if we can get that and see if maybe we can't look into that because it might be a real nice project for us over the winter months.
Well, my, I think somehow we should find a way to close the loop on that. So the input from the senior advisory board is in fact somehow.
Circulated.
Circulated as a matter of administrative practice to, you know, to you or whoever else might get it. I'm sure they don't keep it a secret. But nevertheless, there should be a way to make sure that the information just doesn't stay encapsulated over there.
Well, what I, what I could do is I could ask, you know, and discuss with the city manager. I believe she's also the liaison to that board. And see if perhaps we can't get some copies of the minutes for what they've discussed. First, I'd like to find out if there's a direction from the city commission for us to undertake the project. And second, if that's the case, then there would be no problem getting minutes from previous, you know, senior advisory meetings.
I don't know how much they talked about housing stuff on the senior advisory board.
Quite a bit, I understand.
Really? So that's kind of how Amy explained it to me, is how the sort of senior housing board came to be as they, they sort of spun off.
Right.
Whatever, whatever the board is called, okay, wherever those inputs are coming from, we should take advantage of those, of that kind of input and at least consider about, consider making those kinds of, at least study the kinds of changes that might be made. And if we need direction from city commission, then we should ask for it. If the city commission wants to go in some other direction or say, no, never mind, I just put that on their back instead of our back. But I just think that they're.
I'm happy to make room, I'll make the contacts and ask the questions.
Yeah, I think that the city commission kind of took it back because it spun in such a housing direction. And this stuff that we're talking about kind of went to the wayside. So I think it's a good idea. Let them have the housing and redevelopment bid and we can take on the.
Well, ultimately, the, any housing redevelopment bid's going to end up here too.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, you know, it's.
Because the Michigan's always planning enabling acts, yeah. What I would do is I can tell you this, that I can ask the questions and I can tell you that I will have an answer for you by the next meeting at least. Give you kind of a feel for what direction is going in, when, if at all, we might see that.
Are they still pursuing the idea of building a high-rise for seniors?
I'm unaware at this point in time.
Boy, you should check them on Rotsky. And the rentals up on Woodward Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for the evening.
Any other motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Al there?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it, people.
Thank you.